Good evening, everyone. All right. I just wanted to introduce myself. Well, let me start with my colleague because we are in District Four.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to City of Bowie Town Hall and District Four. We are excited to see so many of you here. This is going to be a great informational meeting, but the crux of the meeting is really about your questions and your concerns. We want to hear from you. So we are definitely not going to talk long, but I also, I did want to share that the part of 301 that's in District Four starts at Claggett Landing Road near Trade Zone and goes all the way up to 450. So that's the part of 301, and I know there's a large part there that gets backed up pretty consistently near Mill Branch Crossing at Pointer Ridge. So we look forward to hearing your questions tonight, and I will turn it back over to my colleague, Councilmember Blague. And I just want to say publicly, I want to thank her and her collaborative spirit on this particular issue. You know, we, she brought it to my attention, and she said, you know, we need to do something. This was what, last year? And I said, you are right, because we both kind of been working on it at the same time, and then we definitely made the decision to come together and make this happen. So we look forward to your questions, and Councilmember Blague.
Thank you so much. I would just say this. I know we are going to make sure we go quickly through the program because we do know it's a presidential debate tonight. I just want to note, we've scheduled this before Biden and Trump made their, made their decision, but just please, we are not trying to stop you all from make, you know, from seeing the debate. But let me just say this. I want to open it up by saying that this is the long game, and I want to make sure we're going to call our state reps up. This is the long game. We realize that 301 is full of traffic. Actually, I was on 301 yesterday and in the morning, sitting for like five minutes, and I was very frustrated. So I get what you're saying. Here's the thing. If we start now bringing the attention to stakeholders, then we can get these things. We don't have the money at the county at all to do this work. And this is a count, this is a state road, but even some of the county roads, we have limited funds. We have the director here that will kind of outline that for you. For Route 301, on a state level, they even had to cut transportation projects, right? So the reality is that the expansion, all of the things we want to do is going to take money. We looked at 210 is what I looked at, and that's why I talked to Councilwoman Watson about this. 210, they have problems sometimes. We know that Fort Washington, that area has so much traffic. They started meeting, gathering, starting to push the issue, and they got some of the expansion upgrades on 210. We can do the same thing on 301, but I just want to warn everyone, this will not happen tomorrow, please. We are doing this collaboration so we can open the door to work with SHA. We do have a representative from SHA. We have the Director Johnson from DPWT. They're here to mostly listen. They will introduce themselves, but here is what we want to hear from you is what is your experience? Where do you, where does it hurt? What do you think needs to do to upgrade? We really want, so people, when you come with your questions, make sure you, you basically give us what we should see, what you experienced, so that SHA, what we're going to do is follow up afterwards with our state reps, with SHA, with DPWT to come up with a plan. But we wanted them to hear what I'm hearing. I know I have my community, Beechtree, Barmore, all of those off 301. I've heard you all. I've even got yelled at. I hear you. And, and that's why we've putting this together today. So I do think that we, what, the way this is going to work, we're going to have a couple, a presentation from Park and Planning, and this is about the master plan for transportation, which is important. We're going to have SHA and DPWT quickly introduce themselves, and then we're going to have our state reps first introduce themselves, and then we're going to go straight into questions. And we want to hear from you. I even got a presentation from someone now, so hopefully we will be hearing you, from you all today. I do, I would turn it over to Councilwoman Watson, but we do want to have our state representatives come up and say a couple of words.
So I will do the official introduction. We'll start with State Senator Ron Watson. Then we'll turn it over to Delegate Kim Taylor, Delegate Adrian Boafo, and Delegate Marvin Holmes. Thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. I'm Ron Watson. I just want to briefly state that, you know, we're going to hit, sit up here and listen to you, but in the 23rd District, 301 is our major artery. We all know that. And with 301, there's about 24 miles that exist in Prince George's County, another 19 miles in Anarundel, and another 27 miles that goes through Charles. And so what we've been talking about is something more of a comprehensive plan that goes from Anarundel all the way down to Pennsylvania Avenue. I've talked to the state senators and representatives in those areas, and we're going to take the input that you provide and try to raise the bar because we're competing with every other state road in the state, right? But we have to, we have to turn the temperature up a little bit. 301, from the beginning to the end, it should all be a three-lane highway. It should all be a three-lane highway. Before the developments that currently are going on, there was a plan done that kind of suggested that, but the plans couldn't move forward unless those developers made certain modifications, which is why when you go up and down 301, some areas are three-lane, then it goes back to two, then it goes back to three, but I'm talking three through lanes. A turnoff doesn't count. We need three full through lanes up and down 301. So I'm going to sit back and listen. I want to thank you all again for coming out, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Thank you. Thank you, our Councilmember Blague and Councilmember Watson. Not too long ago, I can, I was in Upper Marlboro, and we took a picture to commemorate the 100 years of Route 301, and we learned about the history of that road and how it was built to be a connector between Upper Marlboro and Baltimore, a trade route. And then before Senator Peters passed away, we had a conversation about 301 and its history, and he told me, you know, Kim, 301 was never supposed to have lights and all of that. It was a street, a throughway where you would just have on and off ingress and egress with no lights, but we've turned it into something else. So I look forward to hearing from you, like our, you know, representatives from our council said, we just want to listen so we know what our next step should be and how we can help you in Annapolis. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Senator, for your comments. Thank you, Delegate Taylor. For those who have not, have not met yet, my name is Delegate Adrian Boafo. It's an honor to represent you, and it's good to be back in the Bowie City Council chambers where I first started this whole thing for me. Let me just first thank your councilmembers, Blague and Watson. This is a first for all of us. This is county government and state government finally coming together to solve a significant issue for our community. 301 unfortunately still continues to be one of the most dangerous thoroughfares in this state. About 20 years ago, my uncle, who now really can't walk, got in an accident on 301 that almost paralyzed his life. And that's not a story that's just unique to me. It's a story that's unique to everyone who's in this room, the close fatalities or the unfortunate accidents that happened on 301. This year in the General Assembly, we had a huge debate about our budget. The conversation was, what are we going to do to make sure that the transportation projects, not just in Prince George's County, but throughout the state actually get funded? With some collaboration with the House and Senate, we came up with a deal that funded the current projects that are in the Consolidated Transportation Plan, the CTP. That does not include 301 unfortunately. What the Senator said is critically important because 301 goes through so many counties and so many jurisdictions. And what you have for another first is Anarundel County Senators, just a street, a block up from us, folks in Charles County and folks in Prince George's County, our district, all committed to ensuring that we have a bill in session that puts 301 back on the priority list and gets MDOT and SHA the funding needed to complete all the studies and expedite this. This is a safety issue for our community, but also more importantly, it's an economic issue for our community. Can you imagine what happens when we expand 301? And folks with all this development that's happening are able to ride freely through 301 without any incidents? So folks don't think second twice about moving to Bowie and to Upper Marlboro because of 301. So I just want to thank you guys for being here. We're going to listen to you guys. This is as Wallow just said, as Councilmember Blague just said, this is going to be a long-term project. This isn't a short-term thing for us. But know that as we head to Annapolis next session, we're going to be critically focused on this issue and making sure that it's a multi-jurisdiction solution. With that, I'm going to introduce, I think, the most important delegate here tonight, Delegate Holmes, who sits on the committee, the Environment and Transportation Committee that actually has oversight over SHA and MDOT as well. So again, thank you, guys. God bless you, and thank you, guys, for being out here and expressing your concerns.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Delegate Marvin Holmes, and I do appreciate all of you being here this evening, and thank you so very much for both the councilwomen putting this all together. It was briefly discussed about Route 210, and though 210 is totally different than 301 because 210 is mostly encompassed within Prince George's County. When we, the Environment and Transportation Committee, discussed Route 210, when they had the speed cameras, et cetera, put on there, I put in a amendment that all of the funding for the speed cameras on Route 210 do not go to the general fund, but they go to the redesign of the highway. Redesign of the highway. Now, we can't do the same kind of thing with 301 because, as indicated, 301 was not supposed to be a, a, a street that is, a street like it is right now. 301 was supposed to be throughway, throughway, in and out, period. And as indicated, Charles County and Anarundel County may have different ideas about this, but we want to hear what your ideas are, and we can take that back to the General Assembly in 2025. Thank you so very much for being here. Again, my name is Marvin Holmes. I've been here for a year or two in the General Assembly. Thanks so much.
And thank you so much. I want to know here, just know the past is not the future. The way that this place, that three, around 301 has been developed does not match with what the original plans were. That's, let's face it. We're looking at South Lake Mill. We have a lot of new developments, so we do know that, just know, everyone, don't have any anxiety. We can plan for the future in a different, we can move in a different direction, and that's what your state representatives are saying. The past is, that's why you have what you have now, but the future will be determined by us. And with that, I would like our SHA representative to come up and introduce himself to everyone. He is here. SHA has sent him to at least listen to you. Hopefully, he can talk a little bit. There has been some studies on 301 over the years, and hopefully he can mention that if you want to come up, so people will know you're here.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Randall Scott with the Maryland State Highway Administration, and my office is in District Three, Greenbelt, but my primary area that I help manage from a traffic engineering point of view is the Upper Marlboro area. And of course, 301 is one of the key components. I'd like to thank the two councilwomen for setting a, putting this project or where we are in good context. This is for the long game. They alluded to Maryland 210, and I'm involved with that Carter as well, and have seen the steps that have been taken to help address, you know, traffic there. Of course, we recently reconstructed Kirby at 210, and now because of money that were allocated to 210 traffic issues from the MGM Casino Project, now we are looking in the early stages of designing another interchange at 210 at Palmer Livingston Road. We're working along with the enforcement personnel to put additional speed cameras. So now, as you know, there could be up to three, six speed cameras operating on 210 on a 24/7 basis to, to maintain safety. So, but at the same time, being in the traffic office, I'm, our office is responsible to try to make the best of the existing situation. So as necessary, we may make some tweaks, you know, with traffic operation, with lane assignments, signal timing, with safety improvements, but we acknowledge that the problem on 301 is beyond technology of our traffic signal timing computers to address. And so I look forward to hearing your concerns and working cooperatively with you. Thank you.
And thank you so much. And Director Johnson, do you want to come up and introduce yourself to the group?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Johnson. I'm the Director of DPWT, Department of Public Works and Transportation. Now, 301 is, is a state road, so they have the primary jurisdiction for what goes on on that road. But having said that, DPWT does have a strong track record of working collaboratively with the state, with SHA, particularly when it comes to pedestrian safety, vehicular safety, and where it makes sense for us to sort of collaborate. So, you know, we are here to listen. It's not our road, so we don't really have a big stick in, in the game, so to speak, but, you know, we're here to sort of work, hear your ideas and work collaboratively with the state. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Now, I'd like to bring up Mr. James Hunt from our, he's an acting director, deputy planning director for our planning department, and he's going to share some information, some data with you, which is very important when it comes to planning. And so he's going to talk to you a little bit about economic development and why the road system and the economic development works together to make sure that that infrastructure is in place and it's proper and appropriate for the economic development that's coming to the area. Mr. Hunt.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for the invitation to come out here tonight. I went through, we were talking internally before we came out here, this is a few, a few days ago, we're talking about the presentation, what we needed to do, and I came through and did this whole elaborate, long presentation about the development process. And of course, to get out here tonight, I really want to get to the real true meat of everything. So what I'm going to do, Scott Rowe here is here, our master planner within the office. I'm going to ask that he kind of go through this real quickly, but we'll go down to more so the public facility standards. Slide. So, right there. Okay. So as a part of the development process, first you go into, when you, when we have development applications coming in, first you have to have your zoning correct, okay? The zoning is whenever we're just making sure you're looking at the uses that are out there, the allowable densities that are taking place along with the uses as well. So as, after that gets approved, then the applicants for developers actually go into the next stage of the process, which is the subdivision stage. This is whenever the, the developer's requesting to divide the land up. So you make, you're creating property boundaries at that point in time. As a part of the law, it requires that the applicants have to get a, get an approval for what we call adequacy. So you have to have adequate infrastructure. So for example, as a part of that process, you're looking at ensuring that there are adequate roads, bike facilities in the area. You're looking at ensuring that police and fire response times are adequate, also giving more information about environmental impacts, and not only that, but what are the potential impacts to the schools? So we're looking at that all during the time of the preliminary plan of subdivision phase. And so, moving, and so as a part of that phase, what we do is if the applicant meets those requirements, they get what we call a certificate of adequacy, okay? So they have to meet certain requirements to make that, and there are also conditions of that. As a part of that, you look at, we're providing them conditions indicating, so potential improvements that have to be made, such as roadway improvements, bike facility improvements, all that. That's taken care of at that time of preliminary plan of subdivision. And so you can move on from there. Okay, so under, right here is where I wanted to kind of dig into at this point in time. Give you a little background of 301, which most of you all are aware. You, you ride this road all the time. So as a part of this, it's a main thoroughfare between, for, in a bypass for I-95 as well. Travel times along the US 301 corridor, you're looking at, you know, they're trying to utilize that as a faster driving time as opposed to I, going I-95. Most of the trips are going through Prince George's County, so you, just like we were talking about earlier, a lot of them starting in Charles or starting north of the county, and they're going through, not coming, truly impact, or starting here within the county itself. So people are just really, a lot of times passing through, and a lot of times that's impacting the traffic that you're actually seeing at the same time. So one of the long-term recommendations that we have are, would be to, we look at seeing, just like we were talking about earlier, someone was mentioning earlier, creating more so like a bypass or interstate highway going through, think those standards, so to speak, not an actual interstate, but standards like that, where you want traffic to kind of go through versus stopping, which is what you're seeing right now. So want more so, like I said, interstate or something similar to that standard, not saying it would be an interstate, but it's just that type of flow going through so you don't stop, okay? Also, at this point in time, it's real critical to understand which, what everyone's talked about are resource limitations, the funding that's out there to make that happen. So that would a lot of time, will address a lot of this that's going on, is what we're finding here. Next slide. All right. And also, what we've talked about, what's already been mentioned earlier, is the recent developments that have taken place around this area, such as the Mill Branch Crossing. You've seen Melford, that's one of the huge significant developments that have taken place. However, that's north of 50. In addition to that, you've got the South Lake development that's been discussed, as well as the National Capital Business Park, which is a larger business park that's going under, under review right now, and is, I think they're under construction for some of it at the same time. As a part of the development process, which is what I was talking about earlier, with a certificate of adequacy, they have to meet a nexus. So we can't require them, for example, if we have a developer coming in on 301, you can't make them do roadway improvements all the way from, let's say, 50 all the way down to Charles County. You have to meet a nexus at some point in time. So as a part of this process, we look at what they are allowed to do and what they're required to do. So we, there, that's why you see what was mentioned earlier, certain improvements along the way. So you're not going to see it the whole way, but what the nexus meets for them. Also, we're looking at, as a part of this process, the woodland conservation ordinance, how many trees are getting knocked down as opposed, you know, as it relates to the development applications that are coming in. And just a reminder that a lot of these, a lot of these improvements that are taking place, we are key stakeholders in this entire process. So we're working together to make this happen for you all at the same time. And last but not least, what we have going on, which is a great opportunity right now, is the master plan of transportation's under review, and we have a new, and we, we're calling it Go Prince George's. So what that means is the staff is working with a consultant to get ideas, get the information from you all tonight, in addition to working with our stakeholders such as SHA, DPWT, D-PY, and other agencies, to get your feedback on what you want to see happen along this thoroughfare, okay? And it's not only this particular thoroughfare, all thoroughfares throughout Prince George's County, because this, the, the plan is to, to show an impact or show what that means or what the changes should be for the future of Prince George's. That said, after that, I can, I want to turn it over to Scott Rowe, who's going to go to a little bit more information about the master plan of transportation. He's our master, her, project manager for that project.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Good evening, everyone. Like James said, I'm Scott Rowe with the Prince George's County Planning Department. We've been working on Go Prince George's for about three and a half years now, and one of the reasons why it's taking so long is as we go out in the community and hear from you all, as we analyze data, as we talk to our partner agencies like SHA and DPWT, we keep coming up with more things that need to be addressed. The last time we did a master plan of transportation was in 2009, but that really was just a compendium of previous planning efforts. We haven't really done a full, original transportation plan in over 40 years. So what we're looking at is really looking at what do we need now in the 21st century? The plans that we have were great for building the 1970s. We done, we've done that. Prince George's County is good at building the 1970s and the 1980s, and what we're trying to do now is what are we going to build for the next 25, 30 years? How are we going to compete regionally, and how are we going to provide Prince Georgians with ways to get where they need to go in a safe way, in an environmentally sensitive way, and in a way that facilitates a high quality of life to be a community of choice for the 21st century? So we're, we've identified and analyzed the existing conditions, looked at all the data, talked to stakeholders, talked to the public. We did a lot of community outreach back in 2021, and then meetings, anytime anyone wants to talk about Go Prince George's or anything related to planning, just contact us and we'll come out, talk to your HOA, to your municipality, to anyone, small groups of people. We love to talk about planning. We like to hear what you have to say, as Councilmember Watson and Councilmember Blague said. So we really want to hear that input. We're looking forward to hearing from you tonight. We're trying to divi, define and identify what does the transportation network in Prince George's County need to be to achieve the goals of our general plan, which is Plan 2035, to make Prince George's County a 21st century community of choice. People want to live in, they want to locate their business here, they want to work here, they want to visit here, they want to enjoy the many amenities that we have. And so, and, and providing clear policies and strategies for implementation, not just saying things like, build more bike routes, widen the roads, but like how and where and in what order, and how can we pay for it? Because as our state delegates and senators mentioned, we do have funding challenges, both at the county level and at the state level, and it's only through collaboration and creativity and innovation are we going to find the funding streams necessary to pay for all the improvements that we need. And it's not just looking at the future. Obviously, we're all here tonight because right now we have needs that we need to address and we need to get to the bottom of. A plan has to be based on values, and the values that we're trying to articulate through Go Prince George's are, first, that people are paramount. This is going to be a plan about moving people. No matter what mode of transportation you take, whether it's riding a bus, driving, driving a truck, walking, bicycling, rolling, using micro mobility, how do we make that a safe and efficient voyage for everybody? Prince Georgians come first. We appreciate very much that the state of Maryland is a big diverse place, and our state highway administration has to serve a lot of customers, but for a plan for Prince George's County, it's got to focus on what Prince George's County needs, and especially because, as everyone knows, most of our main streets through our communities are state highways. And so while a lot of people use those roads to travel from other counties or from other areas through our communities to get where they're going, these roads need to also function as the main street where activity happens, where people shop, where people get food, where people get health care and services. So we want to make sure that the plan focuses on what Prince George's County needs. We can't wait. Prince George's County motto, Semper Edum, always the same. We can't, we can't, we can't be always the same anymore. We are one of the best counties to live in in the entire United States, and that's something we got to build on. But at the same time, we're surrounded by some of the most affluent and powerful and, and just attractive places to live in the whole world. So it's a very competitive re, region, and we have ways that we can overcome and be the place that people want to be. And to do that, we have to act now, and that's why it's great that we're having this meeting. And I heard so many great things just in the introductions from the state delegation that everyone's working together and everyone gets it, and that's great because going into this plan, we thought we were going to have to go beg and explain why, and everybody is getting it, and so this is a great opportunity to collaborate and move forward. Obviously, we want to create great places to live, work, play, learn, recreate. That means for a corridor like 301, that means that it's got to be safe. People have to be able to get from one side to the other, but at the same time, be able to get where they're going safely. It's got to be equitable plan. You can't just invest resources in one community and neglect other communities. We have lots of communities in Prince George's County that need a lot of help, that have been disinvested in over the years, and we need to reinvest in those communities. And finally, obviously, we want everything to be sustainable and climate conscious. We can't just build more roads for the sake of roads. We got to give people options to be able to get out of their cars and get a different way. So with that, I think, quick, the, the schedule, the plan, be ready to go out to the public in January. Of course, before that and after that, we want to hear from everyone and, and get your feedback. And of course, we partner with everybody. There's no one we won't partner with, talk to, to find out what everyone's needs are, to identify, you know, where we have competing needs and need to arrive at compromises. So with that, I know we want to get to your questions, so Councilmember Blague, I get a sense that you're ready to come up. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all so much.
All right. Thank you all so much for that presentation. So here's what we're going to do. How many have questions? We want to hear from you. Okay. So everyone can line up here in the middle. Oh, yeah, that's right. But she's going to stand in front. So then she will go. Okay. Okay. And let me just say, before we have the, the, the questions, and I would say, just to make it short, just to make sure we have order, just keep lining up in the back, and then we'll, as you get up, we'll, you'll ask a question. We ask people to keep your questions concise. We know that sometimes there's frustration, and you want to tell the whole story, but try to keep it short because we do have many that have questions, and we have stakeholders that are here to answer. And we would ask, and I don't know how we could do it, to have S H A representative come forth, because we do want, if they have questions, we would like you all to be in the front. I don't know, Director Johnson, if you could come up a little bit. And then that way, we can make sure that you all can respond to questions if necessary. Okay? If you don't mind. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Monroe Monroe. First, councilmembers, thank you all for having the meeting. You know, I'm heartened by seeing the state representatives here because this is bigger than a Prince George's County problem. And listening to what everyone says, I understand, Councilmember Blighay, when you say this is a long-term project, this is a long-term project. And when it comes to fruition, I'll probably deny it and won't be driving. So we're looking at 10 or 15 years. But in any case, what can we do right now to help spur the people in Annapolis to amending the plan so we are included?
Did you want to come up, Senator Watson, to say? And, and I say, this is where, we do think that we want groups to start organizing. We will kind of talk about it. And I have Councilwoman Watson talk. I know when I, and I bring 210 because that was a good example of something we could follow. The community got together, started an organization to start to advocate, and we probably need to do the same here. And it would be good if we start putting groups together to start advocating so that we can actively discuss how we'll address this.
Thank you for that question, Monroe. So in all seriousness, we want to listen because what I've been working on literally is a very broad, comprehensive, intensive strategy. One senator can make a little bit of noise, but three can make a lot of noise when it's only 47 if it's in the state. And we're all dealing with the same things. The same things are happening in Anorunde. They built like crazy. They have all kinds of issues. We have our own challenges, and we all know the bottlenecks when you go further down 301. The three of us coming together with the, the input that these folks are going to help us collect, are going to help us form a plan. There was a time where Route 32 was a big issue. And they worked together to increase those lanes on that thoroughfare because they found out Fort Meade, one of the biggest employers, folks couldn't get up and down that road. But it was a combination of federal money, it's my understanding, and county money. We don't have those funds in the county right now. We just don't. And so what we have to do is try to raise the level of exposure of what we need to do, make sure we know all the relative, the entities that need to be involved with this. And when we sit down, and we've already, the senators already have plans to sit down in the fall, to take your inputs and sit down. They're doing the same thing in Anorunde County, by the way. We're going to sit down and try to put a comprehensive plan in place. And then to Monroe's question, we'll be able to say, here's what we need you to do, and here's the action we need you to take. So again, we're going to continue listening. We're recording all this, right? Okay. So we'll have this to make sure we can take something back. So thanks for that question.
Hi, my name is Gregory Wilson. My big question is this. 301, understanding we only can deal with what's happening in Bowie, for the majority of us like me who live there at Point Ridge. The issue though, is this, what was it, two, three years ago, before there was one haul dub across the street from the Wawa's, where there's the Sheets now? Sheets is for tractor trailers. We've all traveled across this country. When you pass a sheet, it's not in a community. The Sheets are out on the highways where there are no homes. You thought they were doing this direct development, Mr. Hunt? How in the world did you allow those developers to do something like that?
Thank you so much. I would, we're going to, Councilwoman Watson definitely is going to respond to that. I would say this, this is where we're looking at improving the process for development because infrastructure oftentimes seems to go through quick. The infrastructure does not come often with new development, which is, we usually put the cart before the horse. So by the time the development comes now, we're, like, now we're doing what we're doing, trying to figure out how to expand, how to bring these things. So that's something we are looking at. My office has been looking at to improve the process of planning so that we are able to properly plan for new development and bring the infrastructure with the development. So.
So let me just respond to the, the issue with the trucks, because that's a big concern for my office, especially with Wawa. And I know you see all the trucks kind of lined up along 301 and behind Wawa. So we don't, definitely don't want to see that happening at the Sheets. But we're working with D-PY to try to work with that, getting those trucks moved. But here's the issue, the trucks have nowhere to go. So we have been talking as a council about what we can do to find a place in the county to have a truck area for them to go. I mean, that's difficult, but we're start, we've started conversations about that because we realize it's an issue. It's an issue for us because the trucks are there, but the trucks definitely need a place to go because they're transporting goods that we need. So, you know, we're working on that. So just wanted to let you know. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Zula Crutchfield. I live in Beechtree. I live in Beechtree. Oh, excuse me. My name is Zula Crutchfield. I live in Beechtree. One thing I have not heard from anyone yet, trees. I am so frustrated with cutting down the trees. And I put an article in Nextdoor about trees. I got the largest hit ever in, next one, Nextdoor. Because I came here, I came here from military, retired here, my husband and I. And when I came, I looked in Bethesda, I looked in Rockville, I looked all over. I was called a 9500 for a house. And what I found, when I came down, this is 14 years ago, I came down 301, I was so amazed. It was so comforting, relaxing. The trees, the breeze, all that was there. I said, I'm going to move here. And I did. But now I'm just so frustrated with people, why do you have to build these houses, these, these communities?
Let me, I want to, I want to address that. We did, we are looking at the Tree Conservation Act right now. That was in the committee, T I E E, not, not too long ago. And what the, and I would say Park and Planning, which I will have them come up, they did bring forth a plan that where, where we would be required to conserve our forests, our trees. And I mean, look, it's also a fight with development too, because many people want to develop. So we are trying to get that passed. Do you want to come up? And we'll give more information about that. But we do have the Tree Conservation Act that has been sitting before. There was a state bill, and that prompted the county to put, the Park and Planning to push us to put something forward. And I think it was P Head, actually, that it was before.
Can you say something quick before you start? This man, this y'all made a mistake. I, when I worked at my job, I had a job, let me tell you where I worked at. We had million, no, hundreds of people coming from around the world to work here. They all sent them out to Bethesda and Rockville. And they asked me about Prince George County. I said, oh my God, you'll love it. And so they came down here, you have a lot of foreigners coming down here because they love, they love the peace, the tranquility of this community. Another thing, I don't care about these developers. They go back home to their nice trees, they're relaxing here. I'm sick of it. And so you could tell the developers, go back home to your trees, and sit on your porch and watch your trees. And that's, and that's all. I, I love Prince George County. It's a beautiful place. Don't tear it out.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment. The comment you actually raised is something that has been brought up. And so the county really has, and the state has really done a huge initiative over the past, what, two or three years to work on this, what we call Subtitle 25. And that really does thoroughly addresses a lot of the woodland conservation concerns that have been raised over the years. And we, because we've seen this, you know, I know, for example, you know, as you're riding down 301, you see South Lake, and there was all these trees there beforehand. You don't see it anymore. So one of the, that was one of the big pushes with the state government in order for conservation of all the trees that we have. And I will say, I think the state of Maryland has one of the strictest conservation ordinances when it comes to woodland in the state at this point in time. So I want to say, to let you know that that is being looked at. So I appreciate your comment, but you're right in line with exactly what the state wants to do and what the county government wants to do.
Can I just say one thing before you get started? I just wanted to recognize one of our colleagues, Calvin Hawkins, Councilmember at Large, is here also. So, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. Okay, I'm going to do without a mic. Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank you for allowing us and making it convenient for us, not doing work hours to hold this meeting. So I applaud you for that. My question is, and I have some comments to follow, is what is the short-term plan going to be? I remember I sat in this room maybe six years ago, maybe longer, maybe shorter, I don't know. And we discussed these developers coming in to PG County and what they were going to do along 301. What I've learned is we weren't told the truth about what was being put up. Now that we see what's going on, I'm not an engineer, but common sense tells me, if you're going to build all these homes, what route are people going to utilize? That is my question. Thank you for your time.
And, and I jump to say this. I do, we, that's why we put this meeting together. This is day, I wouldn't say day one, because I know there's been some other discussions. There was a, a discussion last year. I know that, that I wasn't able to attend. I had my staff attend. But I would say this, this is Councilwoman, Councilwoman Watson and I initiative to start the process of getting something done. This is what we're doing. Short-term, there's, I told you, there's no short-term here. It's long game. We can do little things every year. If we, now we have the senator here, he said he's putting together a plan. We want to hear, where is the problems that you see? We're going to take that back. We're going to meet with S H A. We're going to have a follow-up meeting with S H A right after this to come up with a plan of what to do. We're going to put, we're going to put a plan together for some possible bills that can be put forth at the state level because this is a state road. We are working on, this is what we're doing now to address the issue. Really, is, this is the best way that we can do it, is to come up with a plan for expansion, or some, some traffic calming measures along 301 to make life easy for you. So, I mean, I just want to note that to you all.
First of all, coming here, 197, make a left-hand turn off of 301, the light would not change, just so that you all know that. It went through four, four changes of light, and it did not change, even as sheriff had to go through the light, a red arrow. My question, as I travel from 50 basically down to Upper Marlboro, why are there the right turn lanes off of 301 so long? It's opening up aggressive driving, just like the aggressive driving we saw on Ritchie Marlboro Road that ended in a catastrophe. We have people racing up that right lane just to pass lights. They, they're at the very light, and they don't make a right turn. They jump down the road to get in front of people. It's dangerous. That's something you all have been saying, that the road is dangerous. This happens from 301 all the way down, from Target all the way down. Even when you get down to, I think it's Peerless Road, just before you get to 725. They're riding in the bike lane. It's a bike lane, but people are just racing through it because of the traffic. So that's my question. Is it for emergency vehicles? Is that part of your emergency evaluation? And that's why those islands aren't pulled out to force people to turn? Whatever happened to the plans, I think, he may have mentioned, I'm not sure, where there was a plan for business lanes to come off from 197, I know at the very least, to Route 50, there would be no lights to go to Target or to even come here. There are overpasses. I saw this up on a site, but I haven't seen it since then. They've gone through some changes. So I'm wondering what happened to that, because that was supposed to eliminate all the lights unless you get off on a business road. The other thing is, what are they going to do with 214 Junction? That's so outdated. I almost got hit by a truck coming up while I was going south, and he just came across the road. And fortunately, I was able to get around him fast enough where he didn't hit my car, or I didn't end up under his trailer. And I just hope that some of these ideas are made public and kept public, unlike what they did with Wood Yard Road and Route 4. The other thing is, finally, is to piggyback off what was just said, does the housing have to get in on this infrastructure plan? Because as he said, we're building and building and building, but there's no roads. So how do, you know, we're saying there's no plan now, but there needs to be some type of plan now because 301, it takes about a half an hour sometimes to come up here. It only used to take 15 minutes.
We're like, can someone, can the S H A representative please come up? These were very good feedback. Thank you so much for that.
All right. Let me, thank you for that very good question. And yes, we also have noticed that the nature of aggressive driving is increasing, and people are aggressively using the shoulders, something that would hardly be seen 10, 15 years ago. People are routinely using exclusive right turn lanes, left turn lanes, and shoulders as bypass. So what we are beginning to deploy are flex posts on the shoulders to discourage that type of cut-through, while at the same time still allowing emergency vehicles to go. So what I could look at, if you can give me specific locations, and then we can look at on a case-by-case basis to see what we can do to constrain. We also have to partner with the local enforcement agencies, because let's be honest, some actions will only be retarded by police enforcement. And so we will partner with them to make them aware of the location. So the gentleman who raised the question about the cut-through, if I can get my card, and then you can specify the location, and that's something we can look at even now. David, did you want to talk about the other matter? The 197?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And introduce yourself, please.
Hello, I'm David Rogers. I'm the regional planner for Prince George's County Maryland State Highway Administration. Concerning the gentleman's question about Maryland 197, he's absolutely right. There, there was a plan to do, to have gray separated, a gray separated interchange at 301 and Maryland 197. That was part of the larger U S 301 corridor, well, one of the, one of the breakout projects of the larger U S 301 corridor projects that were, that was taken out of the CTP. Now, I would like to convey to everyone that taking those projects out of the CTP, that is not a, does not mean that S H A doesn't recognize the need. This was, that was a related to budgetary issues. But S H A recognizes the need, many of the concepts for the gray separated interchanges, interchange at U S 301, upon the availability of funds, S H A will revisit that improvement and will move forward, that improvement upon the availability of resources.
There's one more question. There was a question that was made, and I'm actually going to ask Park and Planning to come up. I just want people to understand, every actual planning project that is put forth to Park and Planning, there is a requirement to do a traffic study and things like that. Now, like I said, I don't, I believe there are things that, that need to be improved with that process, but understand that that does happen. And I want James to explain that to everyone, because we have to everyone because we have caught people saying, does anyone look at traffic when they approve the plans? And there is a process at the Park and Planning level.
So to kind of go back in from earlier, when we were talking about the preliminary plan of subdivision process, as a part of that process, the applicants are required to first go through what we call a scoping meeting with our transportation team. And so when they go to the scoping meeting, they identify, let's say, potential, let's say, various critical intersections, things like that, various improvements that need to take place as a part of that process. In addition to that, they are required, before even the application gets accepted into the process, to provide staff a traffic study. They have to do that traffic study. That's a part of the analysis, when we, what we have to do when it comes to indicating that the infrastructure is adequately there. So we can't sign off on it to say that it's adequately there until we get that traffic study and confirm that all those necessary improvements that they're proposing to do and they're saying they're gonna do will be done. So our staff, our transportation planning staff, in which Noel's here, she's a part of that team, they look at those studies all the time. And that's a, we, I can't take a case to the, before the planning board at any point in time without having this traffic study. No way we could back that up. So that is a requirement of the development process when it comes to those preliminary plans of subdivision.
Yeah, but why is that possible? If you do the study? I'm sorry. No, I'm not, I'm sorry.
So to kind of go back into that, so what happens is, as a part of that process, they identify those improvements, and that goes back to what we were talking about earlier, is when you have these developers come through, you have a long thoroughfare, you have to meet a nexus. So I can't require, we, I said the board, not I, the board, the planning board cannot require an applicant or developer to come in and make roadway improvements for 20 miles. They can't do it. So that, we have to find a nexus somewhere. What does that look like? And so that's what our staff goes in and does, it takes a look at that. What are those improvements? In addition to that, the other piece of it is, do those applications even get developed? When do they get developed? So those improvements, let's say the application may get approved by the planning board, but we have to wait on the applicant to start getting their permits and things like that at the same time, too.
Okay, my name is Renee Jackson and I've been a Bowie resident since 1993. So when I moved here, my wife and I, Bowie was a very rural area. It was very tree-lined. 301 was a wonderful place to drive up and down. It was very picturesque. Development was slow and now it's starting to pick up. It's picked up quite a bit. Concerns are smart development. I've heard the term smart development, but I'm not seeing smart development right now in Bowie. I'm seeing developments like South Lake and Mill Branch come in and there's no infrastructure to handle the traffic because I haven't seen traffic on 301 the way it is now since South Lake came in and since Mill Branch is under development. So I'm not seeing a lot of smart development right now. It just seems as if the developers are coming in and just putting in, you know, subdivisions and the like, and there's no consideration for the infrastructure. And I know all the studies go in, but there's still something wrong. There needs to be a pause in the development. There needs to be a pause in the development until, until we can get these long-term plans in Bowie completed and worked out with state highway. I know it's a long-term thing, but we can't keep making short-term development without long-term infrastructure. It cannot, it can sustain it. So my suggestion in the interim, I mean, I know this is probably long-term, but right now, they said they were gonna put a Harris Teeter in South Lake. They were gonna put a Whole Foods in South Lake, but we're getting a Giant. We have a Giant right across the street. So the developers are promising us things and they're not, they're not delivering.
Well, let me just, let me just say, I'll make a correction. They never promised that.
No, they never promised.
They never promised a Whole Foods. They never promised a Harris Teeter. There was a discussion about all of that, right? And then they determined that because Giant was the best fit and that was the one, and I know Whole Foods would not come to Bowie. Let me just share you that. Whole Foods wouldn't come to Bowie. Harris Teeter requires a liquor store next door, like the one in Bowie now. So at this time, when the, when the developers went to meet with the grocery store anchor, then Giant at that time was the best fit. So, and I know everyone wants a Trader Joe's like I do. We couldn't get Trader Joe's to come to Bowie. We continue to fight for it, but it was, it's very difficult to get them to come here. Same with Whole Foods. So just wanted to share that.
So I appreciate that answer because I wasn't aware of that, but these are some of the things that we need to look at, is smart development going forward. My suggestion for 301 through here, where the Carabas is from Route 50, there need to be some underpasses or some overpasses because 301, as you said, was meant to be a through highway. And in order to get that done, they need an underpass at 197. They need an underpass here at the Walmart at Mill Branch or, and some overpasses. That's the only thing that's going to alleviate the traffic problem that we have and it's only gonna get worse. Thank you.
Let me just say something, let me just say something real quick, you guys. If you remember a community named Fairwood, Fairwood was promised a school nine years ago. Now, this was the developer saying, we got the land here, but the developer cannot force the school to go there. When a developer owns the land, they own the land. And as long as they're gonna develop it within the guidelines specified in the zoning codes, there's not much you can do about it. But here's something you can do about it. Listen, in the corner of Beechtree and Leland Road, I've been there 20 years. We were promised high-end retail. 20 years later, we don't have high-end retail. But our HOA sat down with the developer. We said, we don't want fast food, nail shops, churches, no more chicken joints, we got enough. And we said, here's what we want. And we got him to put it in writing in a signed covenant agreement. And in that covenant agreement, he also agreed to be the owner of the restaurant that's gonna go there. We made him put skin in the game before we approved it and we put it in a legally enforceable document. And that's the first time I've heard of us doing that in Prince George's County. Now, it takes all of you to come together and be very, very focused on what you want. And you actually have more leverage than you think because if they build something and we don't support it, guess what? It's a failing business. But if you work together, we can do it. And so I wanted to tell you guys, we worked, some of my colleagues, some of my neighbors are here. We had HOA calls. I had the HOA board over my house saying, we will not stand for this, that, this, or that. We had another call. And finally, we put it and reduced it to a legally enforceable document. And so these things can happen, but don't think that your elected officials have that much leverage over land owned by somebody else. If your house allows you to put a swimming pool, I can't tell you not to put a swimming pool. It's your prerogative. All we can say is, here's where we're gonna spend our money and here are the things we value. And if you don't value this, we're not gonna support you coming here, period. We'd love to have a Harris Teeter. We'd love to have all these things, but when you go talk to these retailers and understand their business model, they look at a lot of things. They look at the schools. They look at the median income. But more importantly, they look at the geographical location to the similar business because they don't wanna cannibalize it. Okay? So it's a lot of economic factors that go into place. And while I love hearing from you, at some point, we have to really talk business economics. You know, nobody wants to sit, I live four miles from Rips. I wanna go to breakfast. Takes 20 minutes. But I understand that right now, it's a function of the development on one side, the development on the other, and I'm waiting till the development settles so that I can really see what the impacts are. But we gotta have a balance, you guys. We want amenities. The county is struggling for resources. We spend more money outside of our communities. The developers won't build and bring retail in. They can't bring retail in if there's no walkable people to use it. And lastly, let me just say this. In Bowie, city of Bowie, some of you know, we have a brother who owned a business called, what's Rodney's business called? Party HQ. He was charged $30,000 a month to, as rent for that business. They promised the old Sears was gonna be mixed-use. Sears became a regal. He didn't see that foot traffic, Regency, he didn't see that foot traffic. He went out of business. He went out of business. He had to fold up and declare bankruptcy on that business. So I say all that to say is, all of this works together. We have to speak in one unified voice, but have the same vision in mind in each community, what you're willing to accept, what you're willing to not accept. But we have to do more than say, too much traffic. We gotta be able to say, if you're gonna do this traffic, make sure it fits the plan. The plans happen before the developers get approval, you guys. They happen before. So we can say what we want about Mill Branch and South Lake, the developers agreed to the modifications as specified to receive that approval. Is that right? And so they're the ones that are widening those roads, but it's four lanes in front of them, little bit of four lanes in front of Beechtree, but again, in the middle, it narrows. We gotta be consistent. Thank you very much.
Let me also mention to you that, you know, we may not have a lot of leeway with what they put on their private land, but I must say that I'm working closely with council members on the City of Bowie Council and myself. We are working to make sure and working with the developers specifically in South Lake and Mill Branch to talk to them about what we don't want to see. So they're very clear in that and they've been very good partners in helping, working with us to bring the right retail or what the community would like to see. So please, I implore you to call my office. I give you my information. Let me know what you all would like to see over there and we can certainly work that out. Now, I've said the same thing. I don't want any more chicken, gas stations. I couldn't help with the sheets. I tried, you know. Yeah, so, you know, we're working with them to do as much as we can. We were able to, you know, work with the community to get a storage unit removed over off Excalibur or Elder Oaks. So, you know, that's, that is what it takes, the community to come together, your voices are heard, and so please know that we hear you and we wanna work with you and work with the developers to make sure they have their, what we wanna see. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Evelyn Josue and I live in Pointa Ridge. I am, I'm here to ask about the urgent matters. In Pointa Ridge, close to Pensbury, they need a light right there because everybody goes through that area because that's the next area before you get to South, South Bowie, the new development right there. And that's South Lake. Yeah, so that's also on 214 when they coming up. So you looking at the city of Bowie, I don't, I don't know who is responsible for it, whether it's the state, the county, or the city. But we did ask for it. It was a study made, but the study was done in 21, 2021. During this time, it wasn't that much traffic. So that study, I'm not sure what happened with that, but we...
You say Pensbury, right?
Pensbury.
Pensbury and 301?
Yes. Pensbury and 301.
Okay. So you're correct. A few years ago, we did conduct the traffic signal warranting study and at that time, the volumes were low. And 2021, it maybe being in the middle of COVID may have been a contributing factor.
Yes.
So we'd be more than glad to update our studies. We wouldn't do a new study, though, until school reopens because to do a study right now with traffic being low may not be a true representation of the normal peaks that occur. So I'll give you my card and you can email me and I can...
I think I have your information.
Oh, you have?
We talked before.
Okay.
Yes, we have talked about this same intersection, but it's also the road going through from 301 going down to 214 because they are going straight up and down. It's a neighborhood. Kids running around, maybe we need some calming strips. And then when the tree is going down, it's the infrastructure of the houses because it's an older community. The ground, the vibrations, you know, it's a lot of different things that need to be considered in that area right now with all the development.
Okay. So for the traffic signal study, email, I can do a updated study for going through the neighborhood. Are you talking about still along 301, 214, or you talking about inside?
She's going through the neighborhood.
Okay.
It's a cut through to get to 214.
Okay. And then we probably need to work with the local county or municipality to help address that.
So I'll make it a priority to work with S H A on that as well.
My name is Gwenda Anderson and you alluded to several studies in the past, but there was one done in 93 and the final report was in, I'm sorry, yeah, in 94. It was the 301 transportation study that was commissioned by then-Governor Schaefer. And having read that 788-page study, 31 years later, we're still talking about the same issues. And one of the conclusions was, the future of U.S. 301 is of crucial significance for the surrounding regions. And doing nothing in terms of transportation, planning for the corridor will hurt all interests, land use, economic development, environmental resource protection, and transportation. And having lived and still have a family member that lives on 301, right in the median, the development severely impacts coming in and out of the driveway. Sometimes it's, well, 301 is a parking lot at certain times and you'd take, you know, 20, 30 minutes to get out of the driveway. And you definitely have to plan when you go to your mailbox, which sits on the opposite side of the highway. So I'm hoping that you will look at some of the previous studies and not try to reinvent the wheel because the issues are still there, if not more, you know, urgent and has been exacerbated. So as you look at things, please don't take another 31 years to...
We will not do that. Goodness, I was like eight then. You wanna come up and talk, do you, do you know anything about this study?
Let, let our regional plan...
Because I do think we're gonna be looking at probably doing a study to really prove what we're seeing, but I don't know what the process is.
The 93 study that the lady was talking about, that is, that is just actually the same, that is for the same improvements that was recently taken out of, out of, out of the CTP. The issue isn't really, well, first off, if funds ever become available, there will have to be a, we will have to revisit current conditions. But the issue, the core issue is the lack of available funds. So it's not, it's more than just inventing the wheel and running, running it in place. The real issue is obtaining adequate funds for the project and revisioning the overall corridor and perhaps breaking the project into smaller digestible chunks. So that is something S H A can definitely look for as we work with our local and state
Next question.
Hi, my name is Lisa Boban. I've lived in Bowie since 1997 and I have a question and then I have two issues that I think that it would be important for us to study. Since we continue to allow development in Bowie, why not consider adding schools and infrastructure in the development package that developers proposed? It shouldn't be an afterthought. And if we continue to develop in the package, we need to require upscale restaurants, retail, and grocery stores that people in our community actually want. You know, we're getting the, what is it, Raising Cane? And we have a lot of, it's fast food. We don't need, we don't need more fast food in Bowie or in Prince George's County. We need healthy living and healthy eating and that's very important.
And can I just say one thing? And can I just say one thing? I don't wanna interrupt you, Lisa, but it's also crucial that you all continue to stay engaged specifically with your city council, because I was on the council when Raising Cane came to talk to us. So it is definitely something that you all definitely need to keep your eyes and ears open for what's going on in the City of Bowie and what's coming or what is proposed to come. So I just ask you to do that as well with the county.
Right, and, and I know, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you for all the elected officials here, state and local. It's very important that you hear what's happening and what the needs of our communities are. I would like to propose that until we find a solution to funding the highway, the state highway 301, that we halt all development in, on that corridor with houses and other things, because it simply is going to cause more congestion. And until we find a solution, whether we creatively, you know, decide on our own or whatever we do, I think it needs to stop. I mean, how many houses can we develop? Are there enough people to even live in the houses?
So let me, there's a couple things I wanna say, cuz I did a couple things last year, and some of y'all didn't show up. Number one, we put a healthy restaurant bill forward, and that bill was supposed to be a way to fund healthy options. Now, we did, the council passed it unanimously. No, we had one vote that didn't, one person did not vote it, but the administration did not fund it. And, 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 you know, we did want people to put pressure, we did put the word out there, but the reality is that we do wanna change the scene of Prince George's County as a place. We are in a food swamp, even in Bowie, even in high-end areas. We're still in a food swamp, which is confusing to have a home that's a million dollars and your neighborhood restaurant is Pizza Hut. So, you know, that's like an issue. No, let me just explain, that's, that's one thing. Number two, as you all know, last year, I took a hit for it. I put out a bill that was going to pause town home development, and. When I tell you I got beat up by every developer in town, pressured by everyone, threatened that people were gonna take me out when I ran for reelection, I got the. Now, what I would say is that we put the word out, when we had the hearing, y'all did not show up. You did, you did. I remember you when you stood up there, I remember you. But we did not have an overwhelming number. Thank you, Millie. A lot of folks came, we did a video, all. The reality is y'all got to show up, so we can show people that you all are serious about this. So this is something I wanna say. But let me just make sure people understand how development works. When we approve a project, when Park and Planning approves a project, you don't approve a McDonald's. You approve retail, commercial. Whatever the developer puts on there is, you know, that's between them and who they have, as long as they have the zoning and approval, they can put whatever they want that fits into commercial. So I just wanna understand, you all to understand, when somebody say, well, why is there a giant? The Councilwoman Watson cannot control whether they pick Giant, Harris Teeter, all this. All she can control is approving commercial, and whatever they put there is what they have the right to do as owners of the, of the thing. Now, all we could do, what we, what they're doing in Beechtree, all we can do is get out there and push. I mean, when they talk about Beechtree, when a developer came to us, I said, look, if you go forward, you gotta put retail there. We need a covenant. So they work with Beechtree, and thank God for Senator Watson's leadership, they got something for, because what we didn't want was the okie doke, and this is, the okie doke comes, if you have a C G O, that's mixed use. A developer literally can say, come in and say, look, I'm gonna do retail and houses. And then they, they get the, they own the land, and they could put just houses and then no retail. So we did the covenant to save, to protect the community from seeing only houses and no retail. But what that developer puts in there, we gotta be vigilant. So I think Senator Watson has been the leadership. We've got some leaders here, Angela, some other people. Angela, you're in the back here. They have been pushing to say, we're gonna try to get a bus boys imposed, we're gonna, but I am gonna be on top of that developer, like, you know, they gonna be annoyed by me, because we wanna make sure we get some quality development here. But it's hard, because at the end of the day, I could call that developer 50 times after they get their approval. I cannot control what goes in that restaurant, and I want people to understand that part of the process. All right, thank you so much.
I just want, I'll put one little thing into the mix. I'm not arguing your point about the need for, to slow down or stop development or to increase it. I just want you to understand some of the timeframes, just to understand the timeframes. South Lake, for example, that was started 29 years ago, okay? And then Mill Branch, that's over 20 years ago, okay? And then Melford, that's 18 years ago. So I'm not saying that the argument is that, cuz these things don't happen overnight. They're decades long, so just keep that in mind as well, all right? Thank you very much. That's all I wanted to say.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this platform. My name is Lord Leo Carter. I live in Upper Marlboro off 301. My question slash comment is, I think it's pretty evident how developers see the residents of PG County. I think that every developer has to do some sort of study, deep dive into where they're building. I'm sure a developer wouldn't put a Cane's in Rockville or any, in Potomac or any of those places. So to my question in light of that, it's, I know that there's a zoning process that you guys were talking about, and you guys don't control what is built on their private land once they do that. But I don't know whether it needs to be a bill, whether it needs to be some sort of law that we vote at the next election, that I think even if it's something where, hey, we don't want, or it can't be that there's a gas station next to another gas station within two, three miles of the last gas station, because at the end of the day, what we're doing inherently is shooting ourselves in the foot, because the sheets, to the point, I think everyone is on the same page about the sheets, our sentiments, is that it now leads and lends to more adverse building. So when a developer sees a sheets, the next developer thinks, hmm, Royal Farms, and then they think, ooh, Cane's. And then they, so when a developer who would build a Starbucks, they, we know how Starbucks has been open with how they choose to build and where they put Starbucks. So when they come and see sheets and Wawa and Royal Farms everywhere, they're not gonna build in general, so there's no way we can tell sheets, break it down. So I think, I, I'm, one of the gentlemen said that, I think he stepped out. He said that, oh, he, you know, fought in that, you know, they came together and made him sign a covenant of some sort, but I think that's like one for 10 from what I'm hearing from, you know, that's our success rate. So how do we, do we do a bill at this point? Because I don't think anyone can wait 10 years to change.
I would say, I would say this, I am aware of this. One of the reasons why, well, in my district, some of the developers have been tiptoeing to say, okay, what do you want, because I have been so vocal. And I would say this, you can't, we can't force certain things, but we can limit, and I just think we strategically tried to limit. Last year, we passed a bill that would limit gas stations. You need a special exception for a gas station, so meaning it goes before the council, and the council is allowed to say no. And what I found is that I'm looking at different ways to do that, where you limit, like what we did with the tobacco stores, they have to be in an industrial zone. That's the way we actually strategically would address it. And you said what?
So to your point, you just said, so how did sheets get there if you guys can say no?
You said, how did what?
Sheets get there if you can say no.
Well, they don't have a special exception for sheets. So my point is that we passed bills last year, anything that was already, if you see a sheets already, it's likely that that approval was some time ago. We put some limitations going forward, even with the gas station, when anything that was pending last year had to go through, because legally, the law requires that once something is permitted or allowed, it would have an adverse impact on a business to all of a sudden ban it right in the middle. So to a certain extent, anything that was pending, like we did it with public storage, public storage going forward can no longer be in commercial development. So you would not see it in future development, it cannot be in your commercial development. However, anything that was pending had to move forward by law. That was what our lawyers provide, and then that was, so, but we can do that with little things here and there that we're trying to address. Now, there's another part of this where we do need to increase our commercial development. Understand why some people want us to just have what we have now. Our, our county revenues are limited because we have so many homes and not enough commercial development. We're literally living, that's why we can't give a whole big tax decrease for, for, for your property taxes, is because we pay our bills with it. We literally run the county on, on the backs of residential, residential, right, 70%, 70%. And let me just tell you, 70% of our, of our income revenues come from residential taxes, only, and they actually said 29%. It's actually 70, with 29% comes from commercial. So we have to build commercial development, or else it's less money for schools, it's less money for this. So honestly, that's something that we all have to balance, and frankly, we're looking at trying to get more commercial development. Frankly, people are looking at data centers. We have to do all of these things, because we have about a million people. Montgomery County, 70% of their revenues come from commercial. And that, and only 20, only 30% of theirs is residential. So, and they have a $7.1 billion budget, and we're looking at 5.4 with the same amount of people, and we have more need. So we have to, we do have to increase our commercial development, so that has to be something. That's why we're trying to look at the downtown Largo, develop that. One thing about development in Prince George's County is that it's kind of all over the place. That's what I preached on the, I, I talked on the soapbox last year about creating downtown centers. Instead of developing in random Bowie areas or random Upper Marlboro, let's find downtown centers. In Montgomery County, why do they look, why do they have 70% retail? Because you have downtown Bethesda, downtown Rockville, downtown Gaithersburg, downtown Silver Spring. They have downtown centers that they have, and that leaves them to keep the outskirts nice and quiet. And that's what we wanna do, is build up that New Carrollton, build up the College Park, build up National Harbor, build up Largo, so that we can leave you all in peace. But that's the, that's the ultimate goal. And let me just say, we have a new planning director who is seeing, has a great vision for what we're planning to do, along with Deputy Director James Hunt, so we are definitely moving in the right direction. Thank you. Go ahead.
So we're wrapping up, but if you do have questions and you're not able to make it before we end, we have some forms in the back, and you can write your questions down, and we'll make sure that we get a response back to you. If you could see James, he's in the red shirt, he has some forms, and you can write down your questions, but I think we're gonna cut off at this.
Yeah, so we, so I did see a couple people that stood up, and we just wanna get you all to get to say your questions. You have to be like one minute, and we're gonna try to be quick, but I did see the young lady that came up, and I didn't want you to have to sit back down. So we, right now, the young man with the black shirt is the end of the questions. So let's, so let's, we doing rapid now, come on.
Lightning round. All right, so my name is Arwin Cosby. I live in Lake Arbor. I think I'm the only person in here, this building, that doesn't live on 301, apparently. When I am not going into the city, I know that you guys want me to take 214 to 301. You do not want me to take all the side roads. I will take every side road there is to avoid 301, and I know that that's most of us in here. The cost of not addressing 301 is that we have folks speeding on Church Road, we have folks speeding on Lottford, Lottford Vista, all of that kinda stuff, and that is incredibly dangerous, okay? The last thing is, I really wanted to talk about, it was mentioned before, the interchange of 214 to get on the 301, north or south, is a danger, okay? And that's an immediate thing for someone to look at, please.
Thank you. I am your neighbor, I live in.
And I appreciate you so much.
I am your neighbor, I live in Kettering, and I have the exact same problem. I go down that 214, and I don't know if you could come up and speak about that, to merge in is a danger, is dangerous. And then also, I would say, even when you get off of 214 to 301, it's dark. I mean, from 301 to, it's very dark.
So part of the merge issue, I know, is when you merge from the left lane and narrow, it's because we are constrained by the, the infrastructure there, limits how wide we can widen the road. So again, unless there's major funding available that allow us to safely reconstruct, we are limited at this time.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Warner. I've lived here quite a while, and I have three things. About five years ago, I was on Excalibur, and I wanted to go home, and so I went north, and it took me six minutes to go a mile, and there wasn't heavy traffic. So it was too many lights that were not synchronized. I went a block and the light stopped. I got to go, and I got stopped another half a block. So if you, if you're going to make it go all the way through, great, but if you're gonna put lights synchronized when you have five lights that are block and a half, okay?
You, you raised a good point, and we strive constantly to evaluate our system timing of lights. We try to do it at least every three years. Admittedly, COVID slowed us down because we couldn't do meaningful progression studies then, so we a little backed up, but we have a systematic way of reviewing the system, and if you email me with a particular location, we can always take a look to make sure that all our detections are working.
Right in the heart of Bowie, I mean, Excalibur to Route 50. That's it. Six light, I think it was too much.
Okay, so we do endeavor to synchronize the traffic signals. They do not work independently.
Yeah. Another thing is, we're all running to, let's add a third lane. I mean, I just came down from Glen Burnie on 301, and they had three lanes, and all the traffic was dead stop. If you go on 270, they have six lanes, and the traffic's dead stop. I think that someone has gotta sit down with a magic genie and solve it, cuz we're, the cars are there, and we're not gonna go away with the cars, and so we need to have better thinking. And that, and the last thing is, I know there's a department in the county that says we need to have more development because they need more money in the tax base. Too bad they don't get together with the guy in the other department that says, I don't have enough of money to put on the road, so we'll have to get rid of this, but so somehow or other, those two departments gotta talk to each other. Thank you.
Before we move on really quickly, you can come on up. I just wanna say a thank you, because we are in the home of the City of Bowie and the council, and I wanna thank them so much for hosting us this evening. So we have, I wanted to introduce very quickly Clinton Truesdale, District Three, City Council Member, Dennis Brady, At-Large Council Member for the City of Bowie, Wanda Rogers, City of Bowie, At-Large Council Member, and there's Al Lot, who's our awesome city manager, Dan Mears, Assistant City Manager, and then, of course, Roxy, Roxy Endebo-Madu, District Four, Council Member. So I wanna say thank you to them, and thank them for being here tonight and for being wonderful, wonderful partners. I just wanna give Roxy a shout out. When I was talking about 301, she shipped me a letter, like, I'm gonna tell you, your folks working hard. She had a, sent a letter to S H A making demands on improvements on 301, so. Oh, yeah, she met with them too. So, I mean, thank you so much, and she was another person that put to light that something needed to be done, and thank you so much for highlighting that for me.
I'll be really quick. I think I just have a comment more so than a question. I am Latoya Phillip. I live in Old Bowie, and we need you all. Our infrastructure, the bridge falling apart, so we kinda need to have a meeting, a plan of action, to kinda get things right in that area.
I'm the young man in the black shirt. Thank you very much. Chip Riley on Claggett Landing Road. First of all, my, we are mobilizing neighbors in our area. There's a signup sheet in the back, and, and, and we have a process that we're gonna follow through to submit things to the state and county. But a couple of quick questions for the dream team. For S H A, are there state standards for transportation, like there are with stormwater and the critical area bay preservation? Will, will the state review the county plans? Will they help keep them aligned with the state goals for preservation and these sort of things? That's the first question. Second one is communication and transparency with the state? About 14 years ago, there was a plan proposed for 301. They were gonna work on 214. First, we went to the 4H Center on Queen Anne, heard nothing since. In 2022, we received a letter from an engineer about a stormwater concept along. In 2022, we received a letter from an engineer about a stormwater concept along 301. They've begun to do work on the east side. Again, nothing to the neighbors at all, no communication to the civic associations. So those two things, transparency and communication, and state standards for transportation. Quickly, for Mr. Johnson, DPW, where the county roads meet the state roads, who handles the intersections, the small things? The illegal signs that are posted on every stop sign now, or the need to repair a shoulder? Is that something that you delegate to the state upwards, or who handles that? And I think I'll wrap it up for now. Thank you.
So quickly, state-county road intersects, the state is responsible for the operation of the intersection. State-federal road intersects, the federal government is responsible. State-municipal road intersects, state's responsible.
I just have a quick question. My name is Les Conitz. I'd just like to know if you could give me an idea of, or tell me about the tax exemption, 30-year tax exemption that was extended to the South Lake community, or South Lake Development? The 30-year tax exemption that was extended to the South Lake Development?
We can talk about that, Les.
That was done before my time?
I understand that.
Right, so what do you want to know?
I just want to know how that came about, and how that was extended to South Lake.
So that was, that was, I understand. And that was done many years ago. Correct, correct. So, I mean, that's pretty much a done deal, but that is a, something that is a piece of, I'm trying to think of the word. It's a program that's offered in a toolbox to help with development and to help offset the costs for the developers initially. So that is just one of the pieces in the toolbox to help do that. In addition to, there's TIFs, there's pilots. Those are the programs that are used to help with the development and to help, to give them incentives. It's an incentive program. Thank you.
And I would say this, let me just be open and honest. We are concerned, we do want to be able to give TIFs with certain projects, but not every project gets TIFs. There are times where I've seen some projects where I've questioned, why are we giving this TIF? What does this bring? In a National Harbor, we give a TIF. Affordable housing, we give a TIF. But we really should be watchful about how we give a TIF. And let me just, let me just make it clear. TIF negotiations starts at the county executive's office, and that's where most of the work is done. Now, I want you all to, you know, that's where we be vigilant, but we do vote on TIFs, and I do see some where I'm like, why are we doing this? But for affordable housing, it makes sense. Certain developments that it turns, it changes the whole area, it makes sense. But I do understand, when people are vigilant and concerned about TIFs, I would say that I encourage you to be vigilant and ask questions when you see them coming up. Because right now, we don't have nothing to do with the TIFs. The TIFs were done before we were there. However, you said what? So we don't, we don't, we don't do those, but as they are, as people are given TIFs, when you guys, first of all, I just want to know this. When we have people, how many people have been persons of record? It's not enough hands in this room. It's not enough hands in this room. How many of you all have been persons of record? That's the thing. I'm pretty sure you can hear me, you probably haven't been one, and that's why you're not familiar with them. The planning board, anytime someone puts a development plan forward, you see a sign, and you drive by that sign. Look at that sign, because that sign has a hearing date. And you need to go to Park and Plan and sign up to be a person of record. Because let me just tell you this, I've had this happen so much time in my community, where we have somebody that says, I don't want this. How did this get approved? This is outrageous. And when we look at that, I'm like, but you were a person of record? They'd be saying, no, 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 but I wasn't a person of record. But I still think it's outrageous, and you need to fight on my behalf. What you don't understand is that a council person, once someone files an application, because it can be appealed to us, we as council members cannot be involved. So that's why I've even asked people about, when we talked about Beechtree, we had a meeting before. I wanted to hear from people, because once that application gets in, I have to step away, because it comes before me later. But what can be considered is, if you are a person of record, if you're registered to be a person of record, planning board for all of the projects, South Lake came, how many of you all showed up and opposed it? Not many. I can pull that record and probably see. So we asking people, if you are going to complain, please show up and be a person of record, because the planning board is then forced to hear you. And then when it's appealed to the council, we are put on pressure when you show up and testify. So we do ask, and I think James is here, how do you become a person of record? Let's just close out with that, because I really want people to know, that's a big part of being a voice.
Absolutely right. I go to all these community meetings, and I try to engage everyone to get involved in this process. Do me a favor, go to pgplanningboard.org. On that website, it says specifically on the register, become a person of record. Click on there, put your information, you can drop down whatever case it is, development case it is. You drop down, click on it, put your name information in there, and what happens is it goes into a database. And whenever any developer comes in, they will have to, they have to notify you of that development application as any part of the process. So that's what that is. So make sure you go on that website, I'll say it again, pgplanningboard.org, okay? pgplanningboard.org. Go there, drop, use the dropdown menu, find the case you want to go for, put your information in there, you're good to go. If you're concerned that maybe you didn't, your information didn't get submitted, pick up the phone. I got a card, give me a call. I got staff who's going to look at it all the time. They do it anyway. And if you don't want to go on the website and do it, you can pick up the phone, give us a call. I got staff that will enter your information in there for you manually. Not a problem. We will make sure that happens. But the key here is, just like they've said, everyone has said, it's so critical. You've got to get engaged in this process. You've got to get involved in this process, whether it's the Go Prince George's process, whether you, these development applications that are out there, anything that these developers, the developers are coming in proposing, what our council members want you to do, you have to get up, and you have to get engaged. You have to be heard. We don't know unless you're heard, unless you say something. Get up, come out, get involved. Don't be afraid to ask the questions. Do not, there's never a bad question. Get involved, okay? I'm serious about that. Get involved. You need to be heard.
Sir, can I say something?
Absolutely.
You know, I'm a part of, I'm a part of the person of record. And what I do, just what you got to do, because you got a damn hard and good planning board. Go, when you see those signs, take a picture of it. I'll stop on the corner, take a picture of everyone.
Preach.
And you know, you got to, because they want to hear from you. And what happens, if you say, well, what happened when you weren't at the meeting? I go every night to those meetings, sit there, listen to them, and I'll speak.
But I think a lot of times, people see that, and they see something develop. We think we can't do anything about it.
We can't, I'm just telling you.
Well, I understand what you're saying.
You got to preach it.
No, no, but when they say that, the first thing that comes to your mind is, it's just something they're putting out there. They're really telling you what they're going to do, right? And I'm telling you that you have any say so, stop it. I'm just saying, that's what an average person's going to think. Right? So we don't know that it really makes that much of a difference.
We understand your point, but I'm going to tell you, the eyewitness, I have seen it on multiple times. I've only been with the commission for the past six years. I can't tell you how many times that you as citizens have come out and spoke, and the planning board at that point in time has stopped it. Our council members have stopped it. I have seen that. They see the issues, even if, let's say they don't. However, they put the onus back on the applicant to get in touch with you and resolve those issues before it moves forward. They can add conditions to this.
First time I've ever heard of it.
Yeah. I'm telling you, it's so critical, and that's the whole big part of this process. You got to get involved. So make sure you do that, seriously.
And that's why we're here tonight. We want you all to get involved and stay involved. This is just the first of several meetings that we're going to hold. And we know it's a long-term process, but Councilmember Blighay and I are committed to you. And we're committed to making sure that you're educated on what's going on and making sure that this 301 plan comes to fruition, however it comes to fruition. But we're going to stay on top of it with our state legislators and work with them, and of course, our city government as well. So we have many partners in the process, and we're going to stay engaged, and we want you all to stay engaged, and we'll continue to share information. So sign up for our newsletters. We have, both of our offices have newsletters with a lot of information, and we try to keep you as involved as possible. We want to keep you involved. But we're going to end here. We want to thank our representatives from the county and the state. Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate them. We appreciate you all being here. I pray you have safe travels home, and let us know if you have any questions. We are always available to serve.
And one more thing, if you live in Beechtree or Ballmore community, we're looking at development there. Angela, raise your hand. She is with my office, and she is here. If you all want to be involved with making sure we bring quality to Beechtree area, then get in touch with her. Thank you.